Business is dealing with 117 C Conk. And we received a letter today which you should all have from the applicant's attorney.
No, I did not.
She made copies.
No one's seen this?
I couldn't open it.
Steal it from me if you don't mind?
I couldn't open it from the, from my phone.
Okay. All right, I'll wait for Ray to make copies of it for everyone. Basically what we're gonna do is the applicant has asked, has given us permission to extend the hearing till next month. He wants to take a different approach. He's asking us to rescind the vote that we took on the special permit, which we'll vote on, and then reconsider the special permit vote. So Chris, if you'll reopen the public hearing before 117, we'll get started.
I'd like to make a motion to open up the public hearing at 7:10 PM, January 28th, for a special permit in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, in Norfolk zoning bylaws, Section D2, D5B, for a commercial kennel and variance for relief from the dimensional requirements. The property is located at 117 C Conk Street in the R3 District, reference to Sepers Mac 23, block 54, lot 56.
Do you need a second on that? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so let me give her, I'll give everyone a minute to look over this later. So Chris, if you would make a motion to reconsider our previous vote, that would be good?
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the special permit vote in accordance with Chapter 48, Section 9 of the Norfolk zoning bylaws for a commercial kennel at 117 C Conk Street in the R3 District, except for its map 23, block 54, lot 56.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And one more motion to extend the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue till February 24th. The public hearing for a special permit in accordance with Chapter 48, Section 9 of the Norfolk zoning bylaws, D2, D5B, for a commercial kennel. The applicant has requested that the board continue this and granted the board a continuance until that time.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, done. Okay, so let's, we've got about three minutes before it's 7:15 and we can officially open Did you read, Donna, did you read through the chief's comments? Was there anything in here that?
I did, completely.
Anything in here that caught your eye?
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Judy. I didn't quite understand when they talked about fire lanes, exactly what they meant in terms of how you're establishing the fire lanes. Didn't know if that's like striping on the road as to what was meant, and that would have been in Chapter 18E, which talks about working corporations developing established fire lanes on the FDAR. I have no idea what that meant.
When we open the public hearing, we'll ask Ray to comment on that.
Work on that comment.
Work on that comment. Okay, Chris? Open the public hearing?
Continuance, so we don't open.
You don't have to open this tonight?
Okay.
All right, 7:15, let's get started. All right, welcome. Let's begin the hearing on Boyd's Crossing. Tonight, I believe, we're doing peer review for...
Design, I think it's another call.
Design review.
Yeah. Design review. Yeah, design review, design review, board memo, the fire chief, and then the...
Okay. All right. All right, so Larry, if you want to begin tonight with your comments and review, your findings, that would be very helpful.
Okay. Try to keep them brief. I looked at Boyd's Crossing in terms of design. It's in a business B1 district outside core. I looked at the plans in terms of general layout, aesthetics, the color palette, the landscape, the lighting, the type of lighting, privacy, impacts to neighbors. As far as the zoning regs go, all but the rear yard setbacks are satisfied. The requirement is 10 feet, they have five feet. Central core of the development is the town common feel to it, so all of the dwellings open out into the common, the rear of the buildings face out to the loop road that goes around. The typically, if you've got that situation with an entry road coming in, it's not ideal, but the way it's been set up is, I think it's fairly tasteful. As you come down the center road, the access road, it doesn't lead you into the back of a building, it brings you to the entrance to the common area itself. There's a gazebo there, there's a patio, it's fenced in areas. The space between the units, our patios, our courtyards, they're fenced in. The landscaping that shows around the buildings, in the front, in the back, in the sides, of evergreen shrubs, deciduous shrubs, perennials, flowering trees, grass areas, and ground A lot of the large trees that are out there in the, in the field, now, there are large areas with no trees at all, but some of the big ones that, as you come in on the entry road, are remaining. There are other trees that are being added.
It's continued.
The new trees will act as screening with the old trees. The rear of the units are landscaped, again, for privacy and screening.
Twenty-four, I forget.
There are some garage unders that are buffered with landscaping and planted side slopes. And as far as the architectural features go, the rear of the buildings show windows, dormers, porches. I think it's, in my opinion, it's tasteful. The color palette that was selected are red tone colors, I think are also tasteful. The lighting, there is 18 foot, 16 foot street lighting on the access road coming in, on the loop road coming around. The area in back of, that's between houses 112 and 114, there's cutoff fixtures to keep the light from reflecting into the houses. I would even go so far as to suggest there should be cutoff on all of the fixtures to keep them into the road and off all of the properties around the edges. In the common area, there's eight foot pedestrian scale lighting, which, which I think is a great idea. And in general, I think it's designed in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Comments from the board?
Yeah, you mentioned five versus 10 feet was one of your earlier statements. What was that, I might catch on to that.
That's the real lot setback.
Okay.
Zoning asked for 10 feet, they've got five feet, and the areas where the garages and up against the T property.
And what is it, what particular part of the properties are we talking about?
It's, it's the rear of the, the back of the loop.
Where the garages are, back here. That's the one place that's five feet on.
Okay, other questions? Comments from the board? Larry, just go over one more time the lighting, the cutoff issue, what were you referring to? Play that one more time.
The lighting is set up is the luminaire, if, if it's allowed to have a bulb in it, say, it reflects all around, 360 degrees. There are cutoff fixtures that have plates in them that reflect the light and disperse it where you want it to go, basically. It's, it's, you can get any number of different kinds of diffusers. You can, you can get them so they could go, go down, you can get them so they can go different angles. I would suggest that the only ones that they show with cutoff fixtures are in, adjacent to 112 and 114, for the houses, to keep the light out of the windows. But I think it's still, with the regular 360 fixtures, it's throwing light on their properties anyway. So I think just, it's a better idea to diffuse it into the road, into the property, and, just my opinion.
Okay. Good. Mr. Chairman? Yes. Larry?
The, the streetlights on the, on the entrance roads, on the loop road, are the areas that, that you're adjacent to other properties, where the light can diffuse into other people's property.
Yeah, there's the 112 and 114.
Yeah. And there, they show them as cutoff fixtures now.
Right.
But I would suggest them up the access road and around the edges where it diffuses over to other properties.
Okay. On, on the stone wall, you didn't mention, on the stone wall in front, I've sort of seen two different things. One was gonna be stone wall, and then one talks about a rock, different product being used.
Ready rock?
Yes. Yeah, ready rock, precast.
I have used ready rock on many jobs. It's, I won't say it looks exactly like rock, but it weathers nicely, and it's tasteful, it looks good. It's neat, it's, it's, it pulls together real easily. It guarantees a batter on the wall, so it doesn't fall over later. And again, as long as it's, it's founded properly and constructed properly, they're, they're a good product.
Okay. And the fencing, I know at one point the fencing was gonna become chain link on the sides, three quarters or halfway down. Your opinion on following, keeping the white fencing going right to the perimeters before you get to the back, or switching it over to chain link?
I, I think in areas that it's not gonna be seen, chain link is probably fine, but I think in areas where you've got, you know, if you can see from your, your unit, I think the, the board fencing is nicer looking. I think it's more tasteful and...
Judy, any, any questions for Larry?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Well, Joe? Donna?
I have just pulled up here on the computer, hopefully this works, but should be able to see some ready rock examples.
My heart. Beautiful, Ray.
Welcome.
They're here today, do you want me to just let them speak?
Yeah, that would be great.
Everybody has to speak.
I like them.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Chair, can I ask him a question? Is there any, is there any reason why initially, when the initial landscape plan was shown, we talked about stone walls? Now, that may be a, just a term you were using, considering ready rock, but where, I look at a stone wall as a field stone wall, consistent with a neighborhood and community like Norfolk, where you would have field stone walls. What was, was there a change in that that went to this ready rock? Because I was expecting to see, not a perfect stone wall, I was expecting to see a field stone wall that I would see out here in the country. So what was the, what was the decision, or what was the change, or was it just you folks all along?
No, 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 so it was just a discussion. Yeah. Owen Kelly, Powerhead LLC. It was just a decision we were going over with the architect, the landscape architect, so not a specific attachment to ready rock. I think that just came up in the discussion, he suggested using that.
So you're still not opposed to a stone wall, a typical field stone wall?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Couldn't find that picture, Ray?
I can't get this to work, I don't know why. Technology. It worked last week.
Okay.
Can you refresh the course? I do.
Very uniform, right?
Yes. All right, any, well, the questions? All right, I think we have a couple of members from the design review board here tonight, if you'd like to make a few comments, please feel free to.
Bob McAdemas, Design Review Board. We reviewed the project as we could with the documents, basically in PDF format, from our computers and so forth. We had a couple of specific comments, and they may not all be relevant, because there may be more information that we didn't have access to. Number one, we didn't see any color designation on a per building basis throughout the project. We saw the kinds of colors that were there, and in that regard, there was one color that we saw noted, which I believe was called Wedgewood, which appeared to be a fairly strong or darker blue color, a little more vibrant than the gray tones that we saw. And one of our comments, Design Review Board, was is that that color at least should be limited in, in its presence on the site and not have 40 blue units. So in our letter, which we submitted to the planning board, we were recommending that, that that color be limited to approximately no more than 20% of the units, which would have been about eight, eight units, and equivalent number of garage units, so that that stronger blue color didn't become a dominant color throughout the development. The other issue was that we looked at the landscape plan and the fencing plan, I think one of our fencing comments may have already been included, but we felt that it would be more appropriate if the so-called, I think it's the solid fence that occurs in several locations, continued down past units 11 and 15, so that that part of the property that faces Old Town Hall is not chain link fence visible from the 40 to 60 people that are always gonna be parking there, and the fact that it's public access, and so forth and so on. So that was our comment with regard to that. And the final comment, also in the letter that we sent it, was that we felt that the Main Street views, those which are for units one through five, units 31, and units 39 and 40, that there'd be some conifer trees in place to provide some screening, because all deciduous trees, when they defoliate for four to six months out of the year, will create total visibility of the property. And we think, at least from Main Street, there should be some conifer screening in addition to the deciduous trees that are proposed, or in place of some of the deciduous trees that are proposed. This is all in a letter that we have submitted, and hopefully the copy received, everybody, not, I brought extras. So that, that really was, the Design Review Board's basic comments, was just to restrict the use of too strong or vibrant color too much, and to provide a little more screening fence, and to provide a little more conifer landscaping as it faces Main Street, to kind of give year-round buffer from Main Street to the properties.
Okay. Larry, any thoughts on those comments?
Again, there was no, we had a palette of colors that didn't show where they were in relation to the buildings or, or anything like those. I thought that the colors were fine. The brighter blue.
Called Wedgewood.
Yeah. Could have been an accent color, for all I knew, so.
Well, it wasn't stated, so that's why I'm just making the comment.
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Bob, I have a question. You state in your letter, you're recommending an eight-foot-high solid fence.
We did not see a height on the, on the solid fence. So we simply recommended the eight-foot height to provide privacy for the units, and also to provide a better screening for the public.
Okay. And it, just, just for the record, it's shown in this, this plan, the fencing plan?
Mm-hmm.
That's the Ryan Associates Plan, that it's a six-foot solid fence, so.
Oh.
Okay. You have no problem with that?
No, I don't have a problem with that.
And I don't know who answers this one?
Derek.
Derek. At one, at one point in time, and it may not even be part of the comprehensive permit anymore, is there was the, the residents across the street from the entrance on Main Street, there was some talk about some mitigation to their, front of their property, I guess because of the lighting of cars coming in and out of the 106. What is, where does that stand? Is that a private agreement you have with that, or is that part of our comprehensive permit? Obviously, my fear would be that it doesn't happen.
I can address that. Christopher Agostino, counsel for Powerhead LLC. I know Owen and Bishop Hashem, the project proponents, have been in constant communication with the Butters, including the Butters across the street, and they have an understanding as to what will be installed. I don't see a problem with including some sort of condition that references that being accomplished, as long as there's some definitive description as to what it is. But I know that Bishop has been in contact and has agreed to provide those mitigation measures, and he hasn't hesitated to include those types of conditions and other permits that he's built on.
Great. Thank you.
Recall what that was. Do we recall what that was?
Yes.
We wanted to make sure they gave us the details.
All right, we'll include those details.
It was the daily property, right?
I have a description of the condition.
Oh, and is that the daily property? Or is it?
That was the daily property, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. Just want to confirm that.
It's just the one property?
Yeah. Peter, is that the daily property?
Daily, it's right across the street. Yes, it is.
Coombs?
It's 105 Main Street.
Okay, we'll capture that.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. All right, no other questions from the board, let's move on to the fire chief's letter.
Sure.
I'll read this into the record, and, A, this is from Fire Chief Cole Bushnell. Thank you for providing the information, which outlined the proposed construction located at 106, 108 Main Street, Powerhead LLC as the applicant. A, specific note for public safety access, street numbering for the buildings had been provided on the plans as sequential from number one to number 140. It is requested by the department to yield an even odd formal to ensure emergency services are able to quickly locate a residence. B, specific note for public safety access, fire hydrant spacing based upon 500 feet has been accepted by the department along with the allocation of each hydrant. C, specific note for public safety access, unit number 17 has been located, have you got gentlemen seen this? Okay, okay. Has been located a distance away from the fire department access road. Any dwelling located 50 feet or greater from a FDAR is required to be protected by an automatic fire sprinkler system installed in compliance with appropriate NFPA standard. In lieu of such fire protection, a means accepted by the department to reach the dwelling may be employed. We may want to touch on that. D, specific note for public safety access, should traffic calming devices be employed as a feature of construction, such devices are required to be accepted by the department. E, specific note for public safety access, the department shall work in cooperation with the developer to establish fire lanes on the FDAR and ensure approved signage and street markings are provided to ensure emergency. F, specific note for public safety access, the provision of a single road access to the property has been approved by the department in accordance with 527 CMR 1.00, and should blasting be required for this area, the developer contractor will be required to file all required permitting with the fire department. Any questions or comments from the board?
Well, for example, the C, do we have to make sure that that's documented somewhere in the planning? That's actually in the original plans. I just noticed it in one of the notes, it says units 17 through 19 to have fire sprinklers. Right there.
Yep.
In the original plans.
That's on what page?
Sheet number?
It's on OE 262.
I should say sheet, something.
Should say sheet, huh? Well.
You can find where I find it. Sheet four of nine.
Okay. Where'd you find that?
I'm not telling. Sheet four of nine anymore.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could just add in, I, that might, that note may have carried over from earlier plans, but based on the latest layout, it's, it is only unit 17 that the fire sprinklers...
Oh, okay. Which is in accordance with fire department regulations, okay. And I, I had a question, I didn't understand, just if someone could explain to me for future verification, what it means in E about cooperation with established fire lanes. What does that mean, fire lanes? Who wants to take a stab at that?
Again, Jim Pavlik with Outback Engineering. My discussion with Chief, yeah, Chief Bushnell, thank you, was that he was concerned about the on-street parking, so it goes back to some of the original comments and recommendations from the traffic engineer, that there should be no parking signs.
Parking signs, okay.
Right.
Just to add to that, now, they typically want to see 20 feet clear as a fire lane, so if it's less, if it's, if there's parking on the street, you're not gonna get your 20 feet clear. So what he wants is to make sure that he has his 20 feet to get his fire trucks in and out.
Okay. Is that all built into the plan?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me.
And Michael, thinking that, we should just double check the list. Basically, even the first one, it's just saying that the plans were showing it 1 to 40 sequentially for the house numbering? Or that he wants it to be an even-on format?
We typically, we have a uniform numbering system now in Norfolk, so we typically at final, put the numbers on each one of the units.
We end up doing that anyway.
We will end up doing that, yeah. But it's better just to bring, put it out in the open, so.
Chris, any questions? No questions. Okay. Hang on, Bob. Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'll open it up to Butters.
Yeah, Bob McAdemas, 7 Diamond Street, Norfolk. My question here is simply that in a prior review of a project similar to this in this same location, there was a requirement for emergency fire access lane, so that you could get to the property from two different directions. I didn't see that on the property, but maybe you can make care of it.
You can take a whack at it. In their application to the town, they have to, we have to follow state regulations, not town regulations, and under the state regulations, don't quote, don't ask me for a quotation, don't ask me for a quotation, but under the state regulations, you don't need two forms of access, you only need one. And that actually is covered in their application somewhere. I can show you the reference if you'd like to see it.
And if I'm correct, the fire department has reviewed and said that the one access road was okay, right?
Yes, they have.
That's F.
Yeah.
He states in his letter that that's fine with the fire department.
Right.
So it's been reviewed by the fire department.
Any other questions?
Peter, I'm in 84th Park. I had a couple of questions on the fence. The fence along property at 114 Main and 112 Main, that's going to be six feet tall. Now, fences don't last forever. Would that be in the property agreement that that fence would always be replaced as long as the property's there? That's my question regarding the fence.
What did Peter ask? I couldn't hear him.
He wants to make sure that the fence is going to be maintained.
Yeah.
For the life of the property.
It says in the agreement.
Yep. I can address that. That's a common element of the condominium. It's like a common area expense, so the condominium will continue to maintain that like any other common area.
The drainage would be maintained?
Yes, as well.
But then a question on the post lights along 114 and 112. Are those 16 feet in height, too? And how many of them are there? I haven't seen the plan, so I'm curious. The pole lights.
Yes, so they are.
They are 16 feet.
With the cutoff?
Yes.
How many are along the property line?
There are four.
Four along the property line?
That would be with Findwood.
Why don't we just...
Do you want to move this up for the board?
Nice moves up on the screen. We can't get it on the screen tonight, Ray?
No.
I don't think...
Lighting plan. We have the lighting plan here. One of these is lighting.
So that's the pole lighting there in red? Correct. Oh, so there's four, okay. And then Larry, just a comment. I think this garage is only five feet from the property line when you were saying that all the buildings in the back of the... Yeah, this, I think this is like six or nine feet here. This garage is about five feet from my father's property. But he's glad the garage is. I'm not sure that they're that close.
Can I ask a question, Mike?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick question regarding the maintenance of the fence. How are Butters assured that that fence will in fact be maintained? I understand that it becomes common property to the condominium, but will that be some sort of a covenant or something? Who can enforce the condominium, somebody from outside the condominium, how can they enforce the condominium to maintain that fence?
All right, good, excellent.
If the condominium votes that, let's not replace the fence, what happens to the neighborhood?
Yeah. So I think because in this particular case, the fence is part of the comprehensive permit requirement, the design requires the fence to be in place. If the fence was not maintained, the town probably could send a letter saying that you're in default of your obligations under the comprehensive permit to maintain a fence, and then the obligation would fall on the condominium, and the condominium has the funds and has the reserves to maintain the common areas, and that's how it would happen. But the comprehensive permit trumps even the condo documents. That's the first document that goes on record, and that's...
So that would be equivalent somewhat to a covenant. It's going to stay with the land and run forever.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
We have to basically have to sue the condo association.
Right. Or have the town.
Okay, you guys all set?
One more comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Peter.
Just want to reiterate my father's concern for flooding, but I think that's going to be addressed at conservation from the drift I get from everybody. I don't think there's anything more we can do here. Is that correct, as far as looking at drainage and all that?
Correct.
And I just had a final question for the consultant. Is her name Linda?
Judy.
Judy. Under 40B comprehensive permit, the applicant's only allowed to make 20% profit. And does the town look at those numbers in the end? Are they given the final results of that? Or is that something that's just kept at the state level?
Well, not every subsidizing agency has the same policy, number one, but the real, here's what happens. It's the subsidizing agency, not the town, that determines whether excess profit has occurred as a result of a comprehensive permit. There is a final cost certification that is reviewed by the subsidizing agency. The town is given an opportunity to review it and comment on it, but the town doesn't get to say we agree or disagree. The town gets to comment to, I think it's Mass Housing. Is Mass Housing your subsidizing agency? So Mass Housing will eventually send that cost certification report to the board and seek input, but ultimately, it's Mass Housing that determines whether the applicant's profit is consistent with their guidelines. It's not something that the town controls. You're welcome.
Okay. All right, you're welcome. Is everyone comfortable with what we've covered so far tonight? Any other comments or questions before we move on? All right, the next topic we'd like to go over are the waivers of local regulations. And Ray, I just want to make sure, I know that you've scrutinized these pretty carefully, I want to make sure that all the waiver requests are in fact necessary, that there isn't any excessive requests for waivers. Do you have any comments?
I don't. I did go through them again this afternoon, just because I wanted to just double-check. I'll probably triple-check before the end of this.
Okay.
But all the waivers seem reasonable and necessary.
Okay. Nothing jumped out at you?
No.
Okay. All right, good.
There is a, if I could just point out, I'm looking at this, this is a, I'm sure this is already settled, but if you look on the non-redline version of the, I think it's page 25, there, one of the waiver, the Board of Health regulation waivers, there's a note here that says, "Comment or Review."
Okay.
And I'm not sure what that was there for.
Oh, the garbage grinder?
Garbage disposals. This is dealing with garbage disposals. In fact, they will have to go before the Board of Health. But I had had a conversation with Bishir about this comment, and since they're not putting in garbage grinders in the development, we typically ask for a deed restriction on the development so that if they're not going to be putting in garbage grinders...
They can't do it later?
They can't do it later. It actually helps for the management of the condo association so that in the future, when somebody does put a garbage grinder in, they have at least something to fall back on, as it says it here in the covenant.
Yeah.
Typically, what happens is with garbage grinders, just to sort of understand why there would be a prohibition on them, is that they add to the effluent that goes into the septic system and can degrade the septic system. So typically, we don't want to see those things happen unless you increase the size of the septic system. And I know there's some constraints on the septic system, stormwater system, so that's the last thing we want to see happen, and I'm sure the applicant wants to see happen on this property.
Yeah, I can explain that comment. I put it in. I wasn't sure what specifically was going to be done with this development, and I didn't have a chance to speak with Bishir and Jim Pavlik directly, but we did get confirmation that the original statement that there won't be garbage disposals is going to be the case.
Okay.
My understanding is that there's a compost pile that is part of the sustainable design element that's in the community garden that residents can use if they want to participate in that.
Okay. So it was your comment?
Mike, I guess at 5.7, it calls out the ready rock. So I think I'd like to see if we can come to a better understanding as to how we're going to do that stone wall.
What page are you on?
It's page 21 of 26, 5.7. It spells out that ready rock will be used on the front retaining walls.
You're asking them to do a stone wall?
Yeah, I would, I think I'd...
Traditional stone wall.
5.7.
On the non-redline version?
Non, oh.
Toward the bottom.
If I could, I had some pictures of the ready rock wall that we were proposing to use, and it, this very, there's a number of different textures that could be used.
Is that like that?
I'm sorry?
Is that an iPad?
Tablet.
It's just a tablet?
There's a number of photos in here. You can scroll it for us.
I know what it is, yeah.
Do you want to try to get that up on an iPad that you can project? Here, is that what you want?
I'll grab my iPad in the office.
Okay, 'cause I've got one right here.
Oh, you do?
That's what I'm typing on right now.
Yeah, if you can just go to Ready Rock.
I just had it down in my back of my house.
And then turn this Apple TV on.
I love it, right? Gotta love it. Behind my pool, yeah. I only see two pictures. There's two pictures. Did you ever leave it someplace you weren't supposed to?
He's a better person than I am.
I said, "Did you ever leave it someplace you weren't supposed to?"
Close-up view of the rock face.
That's it.
From the back.
Ready rock.
One of the reasons for going with the ready rock is that what we're building is a retaining wall to hold sloughs together.
Swipe the bottom. Go back to your main screen.
And along the top of the wall, there's going to be, well, if there were no wall, we would have to have a guardrail. In this case, the ready rock, it's precast concrete blocks, but again, they look very similar to different types of stone textures. And they actually design it as what they call a force protection wall. So it's actually constructed as a guardrail and stone feature.
He couldn't find it. It's not up at the moment.
Sorry.
I don't know if you had a page up or something?
We enjoyed the family vacation, though.
That was a funny vacation. A bathing suit you had on.
What bathing suit?
He's going further than you did. They have it over here now, too.
Oh, you have it on there.
Yeah, it's cool.
That's what I was talking about, right?
This ready rock, this is a big ready rock. It's cheaper and easier to install, okay? It would be more expensive. One of the advantages of it, like behind my pool, I needed a retaining wall. And basically, if I was to use just stone, it would have had the first core, kind of like a 10-inch concrete foundation, because as the big rains and stuff, it pushes the stone out.
That's Philly, so.
Ready rock is made, each block has a lip that hangs down.
The point that Jim was making is that there's a lot of different types of ready rock. Aren't necessarily just square blocks that look like cement. The goal here is to have the retaining wall properties, but at the same time, come up with something that's aesthetic and pleasing. We definitely take input on that.
And these are for the entrance retaining walls. The interior of the property, I understand, is going to be different. Types of actual stone or... There's a structural design to it. It's not, it's not like a precast concrete wall. It's a much shallower footing.
So this is just aesthetic? There's a structural need for this type of a product versus a field stone wall?
Essentially. Again, it provides for the force protection wall on top of where the roadway is.
We could do a stone wall, though, still. I mean, I don't want to, I know Mike's question is, is this a mandatory requirement? I guess our engineers, you could do the same thing with a stone wall. It just would require more backfilling on the backside. I mean, I don't want to say you couldn't do it with a stone wall, because I think you could, based on my knowledge, but...
Well, a stone wall would not be crash-ready.
Would not be what?
Crash-ready. You did a stone wall, you'd have to put a guardrail in front of it.
You would.
You would.
On an accident?
Are we sure of that?
Yeah. Think about it. A masonry or a stone wall that just has individual rocks cemented together. There's no lateral strength to that, so a car crashing into it could go right through. That's why they typically attach a guardrail to the face of that, whereas with this ready rock...
I think I'd rather see him crash through it than crash against it, to be honest with you.
Is there an economic reason to not do a stone wall?
So this area here, because the point of backfilling is definitely true for, like, around the community gazebo and things like that. That's why there's a lot more options. But I believe in this area here, you know, backfilling around this wetland area is not...
I'm less concerned with the ready rock in the back. I understand, as you get into the facility... But I'm saying at the entrance, where I'm really looking, as I drive down Main Street, there are a number of old-fashioned stone walls still there, as there are in other parts of town, Main Street going the other way. I just think ready rock, it's a very formal look. It's a very attractive look if I was building an industrial park or if I was building a commercial building. Just where this is a residential development, I just would much rather see an old-fashioned farmer's stone wall. In my opinion, it's just, it's a nicer look and much more in fitting with the rural nature of the town. I'll leave it, Pete.
We don't even know what it's going to look like. Do we know exactly what the ready rock proposal is?
Could you show us something? I'm confused on the plans. Is it just in the entranceway we're talking?
Yeah. And that's the other question. Is the waiver restrictive to just that?
It's the entrance roadway.
It's only the entrance roadway, right? And how far back does it go? Is it just, is it just the curves?
I think if they are, they're going to try to do something like this, which is fine. I mean, the development itself. I don't mind that, because you don't see it.
So we only had something specific to the entranceway?
They're talking about the entrance roadway.
But I brought this up because the main concern that I was trying to bring up before is at that entranceway...
Right.
Is where you don't have the ability to do much filling behind it, because you have the wetlands here and the wetlands here. So you have a very limited area to work in to accomplish all of these. There are a lot of different types of stone walls. That's why I brought, put up this one here. So that's definitely something we could dialogue on to come up with something that the town would like, and also meets the engineering requirements of the site. So we're not fixed on, you know, one specific ready rock type look. We have ideas as we're planning the development, but that's definitely something we could take and kind of look on. The main thing for us is just to meet all the safety requirements that we have by the state.
I don't want to see a stone wall there with a guardrail in front of it. I think that looks hideous. I'd rather see the ready rock.
Do we know for a fact that a guardrail is required?
If you're dropping more than four feet, you have to have a guardrail. Who else do you have?
Can we get a clarification on that for the meeting this week?
If we wanted to, we could make that a part of the final design review, that the stone wall be approved by the board, and in that time, we could come up with, you know, a couple of options to run by, get clarification on the safety requirements.
You want the guys to weigh in on this?
What I suggest in the permit is that whatever the ready rock, the areas in which we're proposing ready rock, that that particular style, color, design be approved by the town plan and by the board.
Okay. Bob, does that, you have any comments?
Just that I have seen situations where you can combine the resources to get the aesthetic that we want and the structural support you want, but simply having the back support of a high retaining wall done in something that can take care of the earth problem, and you can still face it with field stones to get the aesthetic look that's particularly appropriate for the town center.
Is there a ready rock that looks like field stone?
No.
Oh, there isn't?
It's always going to look like a concrete block fabricated. It's never going to look like field stone.
Is there a height on the stone wall we're talking about? That's a pretty big entry wall. I drive by that at least four times.
Only four feet. Four foot max height? Well, it says, this one says...
No, it's going to wave it. It's waving the four foot.
Oh, okay.
I just want to get a sense of how the board feels about field stone versus ready rock. Don, what are your feelings, thoughts?
I'm rather ambivalent, because I have personally installed ready rock, installed behind the back of my yard, and it looks nice. I want to clarify that. It's some ugly-looking ready rock, which just looks like chunks of concrete that have little lips on them that'll, you know, hold the retaining wall. But I've seen some real pretty stuff, and so I'm, if people feel strongly that it's the aesthetics of the town to be consistent, that it needs to be fielded. it's the aesthetics of the town to be consistent, that it needs to be field stone, I, I, I wouldn't be opposed to that. But at the same time, I think if the board or Ray has the opportunity to approve the type of ready rock to ensure that it is not just looking like concrete, I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, I would agree.
I mean, I knew nothing about ready rock until tonight, so I, I wouldn't make a decision either way, you know, now, but I would, I think that your idea of reviewing this at a different point in time might be, is a good idea, I think.
Okay, I'll echo those comments. Joe?
I was going to ask, not that it's the exact same situation, but the stonework that we have around Town Hill, that's field stone in there? But it's not?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a field stone.
But the field stone-built wall, right? I know it's different because it's really built into the hill versus being, you know, but I do like the look of the Town Hill type of wall.
It looks like ready rock. I think it looks like ready rock. It's not field stone. It's, it's.
But it's considered, it's got a, it's got an edge to it. It's not constant. It's not a solid plane.
But it's not field stone.
Yeah.
By the true definition.
Not by the true definition, no.
All right. And Chris, I think we know.
You all know my opinion?
We know your opinion.
Yep. I'll agree with Nick that I think we can, Bob and Nick Ademas, that I think you could do the support in the back using concrete and, and rebar and still achieve a field stone look in the front. Again, we're talking about only the entrance. We're not talking about inside the property. We're talking about the entrance.
I think the aesthetics review are important, especially in this area to the town. I know that, you know, we do require at the planning board level, field stone walls, we, you know, cobblestone walls. So, you know, that's the, that's the look. That's the, sort of the, the way the town has been going with, with stone walls. The ready rock would be, would certainly be a different, different kind of thing. I'm sure people have done it in their backyards and as retaining walls for, you know, more, more commercial or more formal settings. But I think that by moving more towards a field stone style wall, I think that's, that's going to be more in keeping with what people would expect here. And, and being so visible by the street, I think it's important to keep that in mind.
Okay. All right. So we'll review that. We'll build in a condition where we can review the.
Yeah. And I think you might even get some pushback from the Concom, too, seeing that you're working within the wetlands. They may have something to say at that. My guess would be that the Concom would want the field stone wall, too.
Yeah, and it's definitely in our interest to, you know, help them, I think, even with the town, especially being so close to Town, to Town Hall, the downtown area. So that's, I think that's a good way to go about it.
Chris, thank you for raising that point.
No problem.
All right. So waivers. We've gone through the waivers. Good. I think we've gotten through everything we needed to tonight. Judy, is there anything else that you can think of?
No, I don't think so. I think you guys can decide if there's any other substantive modifications that need to be made to this draft.
We're gonna.
I know one thing we're going to need to do before we do the final, final. We have a placeholder right now for submissions to the documents received. I think I got it started.
I started.
We're going to make sure that everything is here. So at some point, if you can get a running list going of just all the documents of record that have come in, even the plan revisions, just everything, so we can just have a record in this decision of what was submitted to the board.
Can you do that?
I guess I have one more question. Is there any thought given to any lighting at all on the path to the tee? Pedestrian scale or anything? For safety reasons?
I don't think we have any proposed lighting there. Again, not opposed to it, but we were trying to avoid too much light behind the neighbor's houses there.
I'm just thinking, coming from the tee at night.
Right.
Not that I'm encouraging it, but you made me think of another thought.
If people are parking over at the Old Town Hall, are they going to want to try to cut through this development to get to Old Town Hall? And that's a, that's a tee parking area. I'm not encouraging it, but I, I think we need to, in terms of the design, give that a thought.
One of the reasons I suggested that the solid fence go all the way along the Town Hall, whole Town Hall property line.
The fence does go along the whole town.
It does. It does, yeah. I, I just, you know, since we're, we're talking about that.
There is a chain link along the back, I think, so they won't be able to cut through unless they jump the fence.
And by that time, it becomes a longer walk for them, if you think about it.
Chris Rowan, have you thought about, or Jim, thought about people cutting through there, coming from the tee to the, where the Old Town Hall is? There's a lot of parking there?
There is a fence proposed along the Old Town Hall property, all the way to the, the back line. Our plans show a chain link towards the back, so.
Okay.
There wouldn't be any access. Not to say they couldn't walk along the railroad area, too, though, along the right-of-way. But we can't prevent them from doing that.
Is that land, is that access, is that, would you guys purchase that access or is that an easement?
It's an easement.
On the other side.
They, they did submit a document.
Do you have to modify the easement rather than light it?
I'm pretty sure the easement's written that there's some room for something like that, but I'm not 100%.
I'll mention this. I remember when we started the parking at the Old Town Hall, the first thing that happened is we installed new streetlights because the people walking the sidewalks were concerned about the walk to the Old Town Hall. So those streetlights went in from one of our administrators back then, like, within a month of that parking lot opening. So we may have a similar issue arising in this area.
Yeah.
Because it might be enough of a str- it might just be strategically a couple lamps that they need in there, but it might come up the way it did when we started people walking to Town Hall, Old Town Hall.
I think it's a good thing for them to investigate, see if it's possible. You want to look into that?
Yeah, sure. I mean, we can look into solar lamps and things like that that would go along that maybe would cause less of a headache for the neighbors and.
Because this is not a paved path, correct? There's going to be a, this is not going to be paved, I don't think, correct?
Right. It's just a gravel walkway.
Gravel. So it's not going to be, in the wintertime, it's not going to probably be plowed or anything, I imagine?
Probably, no. I would imagine not.
And chances are, you're not going to need 17-foot-tall, 18-foot-tall lights either. You could probably do something lower to the ground.
No, no, absolutely not. Just something to get people from A to B, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as lights on the neighbors, it's not residential neighbor there, is there?
No, it'd be the diamonds.
It goes behind the, the.
It's behind the garage there.
Garage.
Right, yes. It's not adding to residential neighbors, I don't think. Would be on the other side.
Okay. Bob, did you have a question?
The only question I had left is, is there going to be a color scheme for the, each individual unit shared or presented before they decide what to do? Because I didn't hear the outcome of that. In other words, it's 40 units and.
No, there will not be a color scheme on each individual building. They have overall palette and.
And we've submitted the colored renderings and architectural plans, so we're going to be following that color palette. And so they would not be in advance identified for each individual building.
Because I can just tell you that if they chose one of those colors to be happening all along the Main Street view, that, in my opinion, would be a strong problem. So I was wondering if there's going to be any determination as to what the color palette on the property is going to be, building by building, just so that we don't see blue across all of Main Street's properties.
We, we have the same restriction when we're selling the houses as well, on, on selling the same color, one to another to another. So we, we do have control over which colors end up going into place and it hasn't been a problem in the neighborhood.
So each unit will look different in some way?
Yeah.
You've seen this color, right?
We've seen some versions or.
Yeah, but I think his concern is monotony, yes.
And clearly on that there is, on what we propose here.
Yeah.
Colors and things like that. So there's twofold there. One is, early on, we're going to be building a couple, those first five houses, one through five, we're going to be building as models anyways. So we're going to be choosing those colors and not going to be choosing the same blue up front because that's what's going to sell the division, so.
To your benefit, that color scheme.
Right, right, exactly.
Well, just at this corner right here, there's two yellows right next to you.
Right, and this is the landscape architect, you know, put this together and, you know, I'm sure he has one model for Unit A and Unit B, and so he kind of put them down, but.
Just in the past, we've generally seen elevations. We have noted this color.
Mike? Is there a way to describe in a condition something that would address the design review board's concerns? I realize you don't want to, like, bring a plan back in on a building-by-building basis, but can there be some kind of condition in here that addresses?
I think the plans that we submitted could be, that's how, that could be, those plans could be conditions that be that type of balancing.
I'm sorry, I just missed what Paul said, but I, I don't see a problem with a condition that addresses the concern about alternating colors and making colors reasonably dispersed throughout the development. And that should, that should resolve it.
And that limitation on the redwood, I think, too? Was there other concerns?
Yeah, I mean, we can look closer at that particular color. I, I don't know if, if the actual nature of that color is as bright as it may have come across. But obviously, that's the type of thing that would be interspersed throughout the development. There wouldn't be four blue houses next to each other right on Main Street. You know, we, we can propose a condition of approval with that language in it.
Well, they've got, you know, in their memo, the design review board, they actually talking here about.
That's the language I was recalling. So I could even work with that language to, to craft a condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can add something, uh, work. It's your benefit to make a nice color scheme.
Which one are you kind of?
Which is usually, usually how that works out.
If we did all four front houses in blue, I'd think everybody was driving around.
You would no longer be Bisher's son-in-law.
So I think we just need to work on adding these conditions we've discussed tonight.
Yes.
Maybe kind of going through this one last time for any sort of editorial glitches or whatever. And your plan is to meet next Thursday night? Is that my understanding?
Right. I think everyone, can you make it next Thursday?
Yeah, I can.
All right. So our, our plan is to have one more session next Thursday, close out the hearing next Thursday. We've got Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday to iron out any last-minute glitches. And then we'll have one more public hearing next Thursday and, and wrap this up.
So if there's anything else that you folks are concerned about in terms of conditional language or something, can you maybe get it to Ray by early next week? So, because we just want to make sure that this is done.
Sure. I think, based on the conversation tonight, we could turn the next draft of proposed conditions, including, for instance, neighborhood mitigation measures that we've agreed to, color dispersment, potentially issues surrounding the ready rock, field stone issues, get that back to the town for review as soon as possible. And then we can hopefully craft something that we can have an open discussion about during the public hearing next week.
I just want to do some minor, I mean, not substantive, just some minor editing to this, like, capital letters stuff, but I mean, it's, you know, not anything substantive. I can do that.
When do you want to do that?
Uh, probably Monday.
Okay.
The next couple of days? No. Monday, yeah.
That's fine. I'm just trying to time it.
Of course, absolutely. I understand that. We want to get this turned around so the board has a chance.
So Chris, you're going to get something to Ray by?
Hopefully by Monday or Tuesday at the latest.
Okay.
That'd be good. Just so everybody has a chance to digest this one more time.
Do you want to take that version and then you can do your?
Sure. Is that all right? I just really want to do some minor editing to this.
Absolutely, yeah. Definitely.
You get your stuff to him and then.
I'll shoot it over to everybody and then you can do your thing and.
We'll be done.
We'll go from there. Hopefully by then, we'll have our, our, hopefully our revised version, and then we'll send it right back to you and we can have that discussion.
Now, our town council's going to want to look at the final documents. Can he do that? Well, he can obviously do that after we close the public hearing, correct? Or should he do that before?
Let me jump into that.
Yeah.
I, I did have correspondence with the town council. I sent him the version just before this, so.
So he's seen this, what we've done so far?
He has seen what we've done so far. He's, he's very comfortable with it.
All right, good.
You know, it's, it, the question really becomes, how deep do you want him to bathe into this, into this, or wade into this document? You know, he has staff on there that also is pretty good with the 40Bs. I, I know we have Judy. I don't want to step on her toes either, but I certainly just want to say to the board that, you know, he's ready and willing to do whatever you guys want him to do.
It's really up to you folks. I mean, his concern is just making sure if he has to defend some litigation, that there's actually, he can do it, but.
That's right.
I mean, it's up to you. I, I actually think this is in pretty good shape, and I think by the time you guys can get your remaining conditional language in here and we just do a little bit of tweaking, I think it will be fine. So, but I don't, I, I think the question is, does town council have any substantive concerns? Because if town council, that, that's what we want to know before you close the public hearing.
Yes.
If after the public hearing closes, town council wants to change some minor word, it, it's, if it doesn't have a substantive impact on this, that's not a big deal.